It was good. Got taken out to the casino for, we went to Pino for dinner. That was nice. We had a nice time.
All right, council members, department heads. I'd like to start the legislation to be discussed in our pre-meeting conference dated January 18th, 2023. We're starting at a little after six. Our first piece of legislation is Commissioner Deeds, Rosika. Any discussion? Okay, discussion's closed on number one. Number two, another Commissioner Deeds, Hunter. Discussion? Discussion's closed.
They both work in the clerk.
Yeah, Adida and Thalia are in my office.
Yeah, no, I know that. I thought we'd done these CDs already, but no.
Our next, number three, our next piece of legislation is another Commissioner Deeds, LaSalle.
Commissioner Deeds Season, actually, that's.
It is.
Yes, it is. Discussion? Discussion's closed. Our next, number four, resolution number four, is another Commissioner Deeds, Fergal. Discussion? Discussion's closed. Our next Commissioner Deeds is resolution number five. Alhart, Alhart, Thomas, Allard, Allard, yes. Discussion? Discussion's closed. Our next piece of legislation is an ordinance for a transfer. Let's see. Mr. President, seeing that our budget director's not here, could you help us out with this transfer?
Is this number eight?
Yes, it is. Number six.
I'm trying to find it in the packet while you're.
It's for gas.
Yeah, this was just gas prices. This was just, gas went up and we had to transfer money to cover it.
Okay. Any discussion? Discussion's closed. Number seven, Mr. President, would you please, this is employee wages for.
This one is what it was in the description. It's, the seasonal was increased because of the lack of whole time, so she's moving money.
Okay.
The next one is insurance recovery and it went into some other repairs.
Any discussions on any of these pieces so far?
And then we've got some railing and heating upgrades. Mike, you want to comment on that one, too?
Constantly fixing things.
Yeah, this was pretty, there was a lot of maintenance going on, basically, in DNA.
Well, the rec center's twenty, twenty-one years old now, too, so.
We all still think so.
We're saving a bunch of money on Austria parking because.
I don't have any employees.
Well, and because we have the automatic.
Yes.
For Washington Place, right?
Yeah, and the next one's going in at Utica Place here, probably by the end of the month.
Super.
Okay. Any additional discussions on ordinance number nine? Discussion's closed on ordinance number nine. Number ten? This was the van shell. This is the fees that we're trying to update for the van shell. We do have a piece in committee. This is an ordinance. We can either amend the one in committee or hopefully pass this one when unanimous. There's a discussion.
Yeah, so, Mr. George, can you explain what's the difference from this one and the last one?
After some discussions, we just eliminated the delivery fees and just it'll be set by a fee schedule by the Commissioner of DPW. And then the clerk will, when they issue the permit, will calculate the total mileage and then use that fee schedule to calculate those costs and add it into the fees for the van shell.
Thank you. So I'm still concerned about, I'm concerned about one specific group that we rent this to, which is Levitt Amp. They rent it ten times over the course of the summer. This would then cost them five thousand. They've been paying far less than that.
I believe, according to the city clerk, they have a contract already in place.
So they have a contract that will supersede this because it's already.
Just a one-time flat fee, a thousand dollars we have.
For the summer, for the ten. So, and this doesn't obviate that?
Well, they'll be governed by the, they'll be governed by the contract.
Okay.
So.
So the contract is.
Their contract.
So the contract is essentially ongoing past. It's not for one particular year at a time. It's just like a. Permanent arrangement?
As far as I, as far as I know, it's just, it's forever.
Forever.
This is the contract that.
That's what I wanted to know.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Jill Beatrice, you have the floor.
Yes. So does the clerk or anybody else have the right to, say, for churches or anything like that, to let, you know, switch from here at all, give anybody breaks or? Like, I already know that the Lebanese festival up at Saint, at the Deerfield Firehouse, I know they contacted you through me a while ago and they have it reserved already at the other rate. So, I mean, do you have?
Can I actually answer?
So we actually, there's a whole other piece of legislation that is attached to fee scheduled in regards to this. And I'm pretty sure, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there is a caveat in there that you are to use your discretion when discussing these type of fees.
Right. Well, I mean, that, that one that we talked about is already basically saved on the books, correct?
Yes.
It's already there. Okay. But, I mean, going forward, do churches and, you know, nonprofits, do they get, you know, a certain rate or we go by here or can you help them at all or?
There's nothing that's set. We're trying to set the precedent that if you want to use the van shell, that these are the fees, and we've never done that before. We're just increasing those fees.
It wasn't free before.
No.
Hasn't been free ever.
Does this mean?
No, I'm not saying anything about, yeah, okay. I'm basically asking if you already reserved the place before this goes into place, the old fee is going to come into precedent.
Quite often you have overtime associated with this for picking it up and bringing it tiny and what it is.
And we did have old van shells on the old schedule. Like, these are, these are newer van shells that we're also renting out.
I mean, it is what it is. You gotta pay. I don't have a problem with that.
So the only thing I'm going to note is, if you haven't paid the fees, you've just said we need this date because we don't typically have people pay the fees necessarily right upfront if they're booking for, some of a book almost a year in advance.
Correct, yeah.
They're going to be governed by these new fees because this is going to go in effect immediately.
Okay, but they were quoted, they were quoted a price.
No.
No?
We told them that we were working out a new fee schedule, but we booked the date for them. We just didn't give them the price yet because we didn't know.
Okay.
I'll, Councilwoman Beatrice.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, we'd like to move this number ten. Our next piece of legislation is ordinance number eleven, sponsored by Councilwoman Friend. Would you like to have a discussion on this one? Councilwoman.
Yeah, so this is something I've been working on, sorry, taking a note, with Dave Short, Marcus Phillips. We had several meetings about this. I just want to place it into committee. And then I'd like to schedule a committee meeting. I'd like to, you know, a couple weeks out, we could schedule a committee meeting on a Wednesday. And Mr. Short can come and Mr. Phillips can come.
Any, go ahead.
So if I could just provide one quick comment, I just started to look through this piece of legislation. Obviously not major, but the section numbers are not accurate and are not in an appropriate setting or appropriate place within the code. So that's just going to be, need to be changed before it is finalized. And then I have a couple other comments that can be addressed at a committee meeting.
Sure. Yeah, so Ed, if you could look in advance of that committee meeting, which won't be for a few weeks, but yeah, the, the numbers are just kind of placeholders until we figure out where to, where to slip it into the code. And then what were the other, you had a couple small things other than that?
Yeah, I mean, I, like I said, I just looked at this today and, like I said, I need to discuss, you know, with law, some of the legality of some of it, but it's a couple minor things. Like I said, I can review those. One of the, one of the things is probably the penalties for offenses is probably going to need to be changed to be a civil penalty because we're moving to a.
Right. Right. I'm with you.
So, but that's one of the things and there's a couple others, but like I said, I can review those and then discuss it at a committee meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Councilman Brango.
Yeah, we'll put it in the committee. I'm going to leave it up to Councilperson Friend to let me know the date and time that we want to bring it out, whatever day's available for everybody. And we'll, we'll have a meeting on it as well, so however long it takes, week or two, three, whatever, okay? So you just let me know when you want to have it and we'll, we'll set something up.
How about February fifteenth?
That's fine.
So.
Clerk?
February fifteenth at five o'clock.
You'll notify everybody via email? Is that a scheduled day for our meeting?
It is.
Okay.
It's our second meeting.
So five PM, February fifteenth. And whatever else is in committee, we'll discuss as well. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cosmo Testa.
Thank you. So there's two actual components to this piece of legislation. There's number twelve, which actually rescinds and annuls it. So I guess that's where I, my question would be towards the section numbers going forward.
Yeah, so the section that's rescinding, that, that's fine. It can be rescinded, but that section is actually, I'm pretty sure it's, the title of it is nuisances. It's really not the appropriate place anyways for it. I think I looked and I think we're going to move it to streets, sidewalks, public spaces, some other thing, and it'll be a new.
Right, which isn't, which I guess would go back to my next question. I need to even talk to you about this, which goes against the actual charter, too. I mean, those are, those are part of our, I guess, author, as an authoritative figure for the common council, like, that's under our, our branch of government, so to speak. Like, that's, I guess, taking away the powers, I guess, in, in moving it to that section. And this is, this is something that I just was looking at. So, which would be, like, if you're moving it to, like, the sidewalks and stuff like that, that's not under the common council's authority. You're talking about.
Neither, neither is the other one.
No, right, right. No, a hundred percent. So I guess what part of the section for sidewalks were, were you talking about?
It'll be a whole new, so.
So it's not under common council's authority and what they could do?
No, no, in that section, it's stuff on, I think, parking. There's, I, I don't have it in front of me. There's a whole bunch of other things.
Okay. 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 So I guess the next, the next thing that, I guess, even before the committee meeting, which I would like to see is, the city actually was awarded funds in regards to a grant for the amount of, I guess, to count the amount of trees that we have and to kind of go through this whole process. And I, I wish Dave Short was here because he could definitely, you know, talk about that. I don't know if you, you could maybe touch on that.
There is a grant that we got for fifty thousand to plant trees.
It wasn't the planting trees.
She's talking about the inventory.
The inventory where we actually went in, we counted all the trees and we tagged them and so on and so forth. There was something that I was, that I was reading that actually went along with this and we talked about hiring a city arborist and all those things. And it was something that I don't, I know that Dave Short was a little iffy on.
I believe, my understanding, I guess, this is just my reading of it, is that Dave would be, by virtue of his office, be the city.
Be the city arborist. Yes, a hundred percent. Okay, so that's, that was another thing, because I, I remember this discussion and I had just, you know, I had just seen this. So I guess that was some of the things that, the questions that I had, according to the charter, what it would be. So I didn't know if that had to be removed from his actual title or something along those lines. So that's, that's also got to be figured out. But the one thing that I would like is what Dave Short, by definition, did with, with his tree inventory, because a lot of this, I think, went along with that, along with the CNY conservancy. So just both of those sections, I guess, is, is definitely something that we need to definitely discuss and even by way of amendment that the section titles, the section numbers have to be adjusted.
I'll set some, make that.
Yes, thank you, Frank.
Councilman Williamson, you have the floor.
Yeah, over the ten years, we've done a lot of things with trees. We passed a lot of legislation for Tree USA. We did, we had a replant tree within a year after a tree was taken out of the city. We passed a lot of legislation. A lot of the stuff is a re-repeat of everything we did. It looks like this came out of Honegana almost. So I had it almost, I used Honegana's way of doing business just to see how we do business. And this almost looks like a rerun. But what I'm getting at is, we passed a lot of things, all right? So I'm not sure during the two weeks while we wait for the committee, you can pull all the stuff we did on trees over the past ten years that I know of. And we, we did a lot of legislation on trees, you know, the inventory, the arborist there.
What was that, Councilwoman? What's that? Councilman Brango, you have the floor.
I want to advise the clerk, if you can, just give us that information, that Councilperson Williamson. Also, schedule Dave Short, Commissioner Short, if we can get him here as well.
And, and Mr. Phillips, please.
Yeah, we, we have to have him here, obviously.
You can't have a meeting without Dave Short.
All right.
And Mr. Phillips? Clerk?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any additional discussions on?
Planting trees now?
Yep. Any additional discussions on eleven and twelve, they will be referred to committee. Discussion's closed. Let's move to number thirteen then. Number thirteen, Jack Spake, Commissioner Deeds, any discussion? Discussion's closed. Next piece sponsored by Councilwoman Ayalo, it's a moving some parking and some traffic. Councilwoman Ayalo, you have the floor to give us a summary.
Sure. Earlier this week, well, last week, Chief Noonan reached out and they were looking at the auditorium parking. So the next three pieces are actually, they're looking to take off all the street parking from Whitesboro Street and then Broadway and making that the new permanent feature.
I just have a question. Riskney Street, you're taking the.
Two of Riskney.
It's just two. I drew this handy map, not a scale.
Number seventeen says, on Riskney Street West, along the north curb line between Auditorium Drive and Charles Street, you're taking, that means you want them to park there?
No.
If you look at number fourteen, the first one, number seventeen?
Riskney Street West along North.
No, you're taking, you're getting rid of it. You're rescinding.
We're just getting rid of this. I don't know. This was already in there. So then the next one we add on.
Right, you're not allowed to park there now.
No.
I think it's temporary or.
No, not per.
You can't, on Riskney, you can't park.
Oh, Riskney Street, so we're talking about.
Then this, this section prohibits, it says it on top, no parking, no standing, no, this is the section you're removing it from.
It was the way to Charles.
Am I, am I reading something wrong here or, explain this to me, please?
I'm working on it.
Okay.
This is, and then the other ones just got added.
The only other thing, and I guess this is another thing that bothers me, is even with the state making it a one-way temporary.
That went back to two-way.
Yeah, it went back to two-way. I've, I've worked with the auditorium and the police department and DOT.
I'm almost positive you guys want no parking on the auditorium side. Correct? Councilman Brango.
Just what I know is, I know, I, I see a lot of parents dropping their kids off there. They have to stop, they have to park.
Stop and go is fine, but not permanent parking.
Right, but no, no, I'm saying, there's no, they're saying there's no, what is it?
According to this.
Standing or whatever. I mean, it does take time.
Yeah, but by removing this, there's no parking.
And they're waiting for their child to come out sometimes, so. I'm just putting that out.
He walked in at just the right time.
Your timing could be better.
Impeccable.
See you guys later.
All right, Ed. You got number, ordinance number?
Your timing is just.
Do you have ordinance number fourteen?
I do not. I do, I do not.
Take a moment? Take a look at it? Number seventeen is prohibiting any, we used to prohibit parking there, according to this section, now we're removing it.
We can't, we can't have parking on Riskney. We can't, we can't designate it anyway. It's not our road. Riskney is a state road.
So it was done?
So why is it, why is there anything in the code then?
Why is it in there to begin with?
Why is it in the code?
And I don't think you guys want parking in front of the auditorium, do you?
You don't want parking around the building at all.
Okay, then, do we have to have, add no parking on Riskney Street between?
We determined because.
All right, or no?
Because you had somebody, a bomber. You can't park next to the building anywhere around it.
These are the ones that they're taking away, but there is one on this side.
Yeah, but on the other side, on the five Sides.
Another way.
You're take, you're allowing them now to park there because you're, you're striking this from that section.
Wait, how do you rescind and then prohibit it? I guess, I guess.
I didn't write this one, just so people know.
You want, let me ask you something.
We're putting committee, we can.
Just let me ask you something. We can clear it up right now. The bottom line is, do you want parking on a Riskney Boulevard in front of the yacht? Yes or no?
No.
Okay. So we have to leave seventeen in there. Am I correct? All we got to do is just leave seventeen in there and just strike twenty-one and twenty. Okay? All right. Is there any other discussions on it?
I, I don't know. I guess, what is, what is the issue of having parking on Whitesboro Street? I guess that's kind of my, I mean, maybe limited to one side of the street. I mean, you can still get, you can still get vehicles down both sides of the street. And I see the no, no parking, the no parking on the one side of the street.
It's not so much vehicles, it's more the kids, because of the Nexus Center and the hockey, kids crossing.
And that's another thing, too.
Between vehicles and all that.
And that's, and that's, and that's fine, too, but I, but I think that at least that we also have to come up with the fact that there, there, there is a crosswalk that's very dull and that needs to be adjusted. And I think that if you're.
They've ordered, they've ordered new signage for it.
It's such a dark area that even crossing at night.
Auditorium.
It's a very dull area to cross, even across that street where the Nexus Center is now to the parking lot. So even with the prohibiting, I think that that's something that we need to address as well because it's very, it is dark. And when you have cars flying down the street trying to even get into the parking lot, that little section walking from the parking lot to the Nexus Center, needs at least a little flashing sign thing.
There was actually supposed to, in their project, there was a whole flashing setup and they deleted it for some reason, so.
Any other discussion on that?
No, actually, it was because they didn't want to have to move the trail.
What's staying, what's going?
Yeah, I guess.
We give it fourteen, we give it a hundred.
No, we're keeping fourteen. We're just removing the striking from number seventeen. The other two need to be striked, twenty and twenty-one. And of course, no, no parking on Whitesboro Street, both sides. I, I think that's good because there's too many kids between the cars. I agree with that one. And number fifteen is Broadway, again, no parking at all times on Broadway. That's another good thing because of the kids and the cars.
Let me ask you a question. Is there any business, good or hurt?
I, I would have to, on Broadway, Broadway?
No, I think.
There's the church on the.
There is no business in there.
There is no that they own at all. There is no, that they own at all, or, or we own it, one or the other. I mean, the church doesn't face Whitesboro.
The auditorium, the auditorium, all them, and they've been thoughtful about this, are good with all this? Because I know they weren't good with the other stuff.
We.
They asked, they considered, they asked for.
I think, Councilman, I, I, just as, from a point of view, because I have some insight now, the fire department, you might want to ask the chief, because he, he raised some issues with the maneuverability of some of the large vehicles that would have to be in there, if there's cars on the road.
The both parking on both sides of the street makes sense, especially.
It does.
Absolutely.
They built a parking lot for 900 cars.
Right, it's a lot easier to find parking there.
Absolutely.
When the hospital goes in, it starts to fill up, like.
We'll go to parking garage, hopefully.
The only other question that I can, then, where would be the? Since, okay, so you're taking these away, so then where is the legislation saying that there is no parking? For instance, during auditorium events, the molester started lighting up Charles Street between Riskenee Street and Whitesboro Street? Because that's, that's, I mean, you're rescinding it, right?
No, we're just, we're just, no, you're talking about 17?
I'm talking about 21, 20 and 21, too. So you're rescinding it, right, you're taking those pieces out, which is.
And they got, and she's got number 15 to correct it.
But where's?
Whitesboro Street, Auditorium Drive, to Seneca, no parking.
There's no Charles Street between Riskenee West and Whitesboro Street.
Charles Street's gone.
Yeah, there is no.
There's no more Charles Street.
They built on top of it.
So it's just these two different places?
Yes. Any additional discussions? Uh, Councilman, would you amend it on the floor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I make a request that everybody use their microphones, I'm getting messages from people watching on YouTube that they can't hear us.
Well, technically, we'd be in the background, and we wouldn't have microphones, really? It's really hard for us to remember, oh my God, hey, I got a question, but I understand, it's a point taken, but usually, when we're in a space, it's a little easier.
We make that happen, clerk.
Yeah, I would like to go, uh, the issue is, all the equipment. We gotta work that out.
It's not right either.
Yeah, especially moving it all back in there, correct?
It used to be on a, it used to be on a rack, it would roll back and forth, so.
All right, colleagues, if you'd like to move to the next piece, it's Resolution Number 17, um, authorized submission of Restore New York Project Hotel Street, uh, open for discussion. It's a grant, I'm assuming, yes?
Yeah.
Uh, any discussion? Okay, discussion's closed for number 17. Number 18, this one's for Harbor Point, again, it's a grant, requesting a grant, um, any discussion?
I thought, I thought we, did we put this in, I thought we dealt with this one already.
I don't think the Harbor Point one, uh, clerk, does that look familiar to you?
This is 10 million, split between Court Street and 1933 building.
Can I jump in and explain?
Yeah, are we redoing this?
Uh, no, there was two, the, the state divided Restore Grant into two rounds. One, they held at the end of last year, and we received, we applied for the Mayrow Building, the Northland Bill-, the former Northland Building, and the Harbor. The state awarded 4 million to the Mayrow Building, but did not award any money to the other two. The state allowed for a second round, yes.
Okay, so we're doing it again? Okay, okay.
So we're reapplying for Northland and, um, the Harbor, and we added Hotel Street.
Yes.
Any additional discussions, colleagues? Okay, discussion's closed on number 18. Our next piece of legislation is calling for a public hearing, number 19, sponsored by Councilwoman Ilo for Mandeville Street, any discussions?
No, I'm upset.
You're good with it?
Yeah.
Okay, well, of course, we have to vote on 19, and refer 20 to committee.
So is, is, is 418 and 420, they do fight?
No, it's two separate buildings.
Okay, so are they planning on consolidating if they're talking about primary residents?
Um, it's her and one, and her sister and the other.
Okay, so she is purchasing it for two seconds?
Well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All set, discussion's closed, number 21, sponsored by Councilman Irving, uh, sale of 123 Harding Place. Councilman Irving, are you okay with the sale?
Um, yep, I'm good.
Okay, uh, public hearing, number 21, we need to vote on tonight, and number 22 for the sale of Harding Place, refer to committee. Our next piece of legislation is sponsored by Councilman Burmaster for the sale of 811 Chestnut Street. Councilman Burmaster, are you okay with the sale?
I'm great with it, thank you.
Okay, number 23 is calling for the public hearing, we have to vote on that tonight, and the following piece for the sale of 811 Chestnut Street, number 24, refer to committee. Our next piece of legislation is calling for a public hearing for the sale of 923 Blaine Dynasty, I guess it's in my district. Um, I'm good with the sale. Is it yours or mine?
No, it's yours.
Okay. Um, we need to vote on number 23, I mean, 25, and refer to committee number 26, for the sale. It's a lot, right?
Yeah.
Our next piece of legislation is number, Resolution Number 24, sponsored by Councilwoman Ilo for the sale of 1022 Park Ave, Councilwoman Ilo, are you okay with the sale?
Yes.
Number 27, we need to vote on, calling for the public hearing, and the sale of numbered proportions of Park Ave, into committee. And I think, no, we got a couple more. Number 29 is calling for Commissioner Dees, Jennifer Gorsy, any discussions? Discussion's closed. Our next piece of legislation is number 30, Bumbalo, how do you say that?
Bumbalo.
Bum- bum- bum-balo? Bumbalo. Bumbalo.
Nubala Bumbalo.
Bumbalo. Um, Commissioner Dees, any discussion? Discussion's closed, number 30. I think that's it, oh, um, is there anything coming out of committee tonight? Colleagues?
We have the public hearing.
We hold on to public, yeah.
That, that'll be in public hearing.
Right, the properties, of course, but other than the properties, anything else?
What about the, the piece of the band shelf?
The band shelf, is it, is it unanimous, if it's unanimous, I could just, we could just vote on the one at number 10 tonight. Councilman, Council President?
If you could, I'm a, I'm just guessing, could we dispense ordinance 3, please?
Number 3, technical amendment for zoning ordinance, any, uh?
No reason it needs to be in there anymore.
Which was the technical?
What's that?
Which one was that?
The one that Corporation Council brought forth.
Oh, yeah.
You guys passed the index.
Any discussions for that? Okay, we'll dispense that, we'll call that up, we're dispensing, and we'll call for the sale, Mr. President, go ahead, you have something else.
No, I was just gonna say, and then, I can't remember, was it 21, I mean, there's 21.
That's just leave, I'm leaving that in committee.
There is no 21 in committee at all, Mr. President?
Yes, there is, yes, there is. Proposed ordinance number 21.
Oh, yeah, no, that's not the one I was thinking of, yeah, no, right, yeah, so we're good, we're good.
You're good?
What about the band shelf?
Um, if, it, the one in the committee dismissed, and, uh, we need unanimous for the one that's coming out today.
Okay.
All right? Any additional discussions on any legislation, or any additional discussions on any topic?
I just think that moving board ordinances, especially when we're talking about city streets, just need to be on separate.
City streets, what do you mean?
Like any, anything, any ordinance needs to be separate.
All right, oh, you mean, on paper? Um, as Judge said that many times, you're absolutely correct on it, so, uh, it would be okay with just to move it today, and from this day forward?
Just moving forward.
Okay.
All ordinance just have to be in the home.
That is correct, I mean, any other discussions? Okay, uh, let's close, and I guess we'll wait for our 7 o'clock meeting, thank you, colleagues.
Eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, it's like seven oh two. This meeting will come to order. Clerk, please call their role.
Ayello, Burmaster, Friend, Miola, Irvin, Beatrice, Williamson, Classimo, Testa, De Brango, Gleamy, all present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the council.
Let me just read the ten lines of the United States of America, the Constitution of the Republic, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business this evening is the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there a motion to accept and dispense of the reading of those from the floor?
I'll make such a motion, Mr. President.
Second? Second from De Brango. Any opposed? Okay, the minutes have been accepted and dispensed. Reading of...those minutes are posted on E-code three sixty for the council and public to view. Thank you. Next order of business is a public hearing. We do have a public hearing this evening. It's on the following properties: ordinance five, ordinance seven, ordinance nine, ordinance ten, ordinance thirteen, fifteen, seventeen, and nineteen. That is the sale of thirteen oh six Seymour Ave., sixteen thirty-six Dudley Ave., the sale of nine forty-eight and nine fifty Fay Street, sale of nine forty-eight and nine fifty Fay Street number two, sale of seven fourteen Blaine Dyna Street, sale of eleven oh six Parker Street, the sale of twelve oh seven Blaine Dyna Street, and the sale of Lafayette Street. Let's see, are you here to speak on behalf of Lafayette? All right, so I'm going to move your name to the public hearing sheet, and you may come up to the podium. Bob Schofield to speak on behalf of, what's the property?
Lafayette Street.
All right, you may begin.
So as you indicated, I'm Bob Schofield. I worked with MBHS. In contrary to the President's comment, I did not sneak in. In contrary to the President's comment, I did not sneak in, I walked in.[601.16][601.16](laughter) Nonetheless, the sale of Lafayette Street continues the process for the construction of the Wynn Hospital. So as you recall from previous planning board, UURA meetings and otherwise, the Lafayette Street from Broadway to State Street becomes the front driveway, front entrance, and pedestrian walkway between those two streets, Broadway and State Street. We applied through UURA for the purchase of those streets. In exchange, MVHS has purchased and made renovations and completed a fifty-five space parking lot on the corner of current Lafayette Street and Broadway for the Utica Police Department parking. Any questions, thoughts on that? We appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Public hearing is now closed. Um, I have to ask, Ms. Beckett, are you signed up for public comment or this?
Public comment.
Okay, all right. Public hearing is definitely closed now. Uh, may I have a motion to remove ordinance number five from committee? All right, we have a motion from Miola, second from Debrango. Any opposed to pulling this from committee? Okay, ordinance number five is an ordinance approving the designation of Ha Kin as an eligible and qualified project sponsor pursuant to Article fifteen of GML for the purpose of the sale thirteen oh six Seymour Avenue. It's a sum of two hundred and fifty dollars. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Thank you. Motion to pull ordinance seven. Miola?
Okay.
Burmaster is the second on that one. Uh, this is the sale of sixteen thirty-six Dudley Avenue. Uh, it's from the URA to Omar Mohammed Al Hafiz and Islam Mohammed, sum of forty-three thousand dollars. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Ordinance number nine, Miola, second from Burmaster. This is an ordinance approving the designation of Ibrahim Moscow for nine forty-eight and nine fifty Fay Streets for a sum of two hundred and fifty dollars. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Ordinance eleven, Miola, second for Ayello. This is an ordinance approving the designation of Cassandra Stevens under GML for nine forty-eight and nine fifty Fay Street. This is, sum of two hundred and fifty dollars. This is to consolidate with the other portion, I believe. This is number two. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
We have a motion for ordinance number thirteen, second from Debrango. Any opposed? All right, it's on the floor. This is the sale of seven fourteen Blaine Dyna Street to Zihho Grisonia for eighteen thousand dollars. Votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Ordinance number fifteen, Celeste Friend, second. Miola. Any opposed? Ordinance fifteen's on the floor for a vote. It is the sale of eleven oh six Parker Street. The designation of the project sponsor is Mariana Agaro and Dahian Berio, sum of fifteen thousand dollars, UURA. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Ordinance seventeen, Miola, second for Ayello. This is an ordinance approving the designation of Eldon Zukic for, as an eligible and qualified project sponsor for the sale of twelve oh seven Blaine Dyna Street, sum of forty-five thousand dollars.
Nine yeas adopted.
Ordinance nineteen, Miola, second from Celeste Friend. This is the ordinance approving the designation of Mohawk Valley Health Systems as an eligible and qualified project sponsor pursuant to Article fifteen of the general municipal law for the purpose of the sale of thirteen dot four two dash one dash one dot slash two Lafayette Street. This is a zero dollar transfer from URA. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
That concludes the properties within public hearing. That order of business is now closed. Public comment period is next. I'd like to call up Donna Beckett, please, to the podium. We have one speaker this evening. Donna will have thirty minutes. No.[922.13][922.13](laughter)
I thought of that. I was going to, if it ran over, if they asked for, I was going to play the old card.
Yeah. So, uh, the common council's provided you a copy of section three-two, uh, four-four public comment period rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes, I agree.
Please state your name for the record, and you may begin.
My name is Donna Beckett, and, um, I, my allergies are bothering me, so I am going to be reading this carefully, so thank you. First of all, do I really want to be up here? No, but I am. Um, surprisingly, surprisingly, I've held on to this paper, and I'm going to be reading it again probably for the third time. Um, I, it, yes, I understand, this paper will have some edits. Yes, I understand that many of you have your contacts, you have, um, other people in your ward, your jobs, your family and friends, and you hear from a lot of people. So, um, I just wanted to remind you of what I had said before, which is, um, I had been thinking about this for a long time, and most recently since the summer, because everywhere I go, over and over, I hear residents bring up the same thought, that they would, they want, would like the decisions and the actions to be for the common good. Um, and as I had just said, many of you got, there are so many issues to discuss and so many points of view. But I do want to remind you again, which I said in the other, um, message, of the examples, that it, things that have happened, you know, the term extensions, Kelberman, the hospital downtown, the parking garage. Um, and of course, the hospital downtown, uh, there wasn't much opposition to it because it was healthcare and it always sounds good. Okay? Now, the garage, on the other hand, got a lot of, of feedback from residents because it, it affected them directly. As a matter of fact, I was going to bring it and didn't, the sign that I have up at my house outside, about, um, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for thirty years of the garage. And of course, that changed because the mayor got the message, let's say. So, so anyway, um, whether you want, how, do I describe those as mistakes or whatever you want to label them? Again, my intention for this is that, uh, what the people would like. Um, there, you know that there's a movement locally, and it's not, uh, much has been talked about on talk radio, about the master plan being ignored, about the motive sometimes that, uh, to benefit just a few, that often you will say, well, it's politics or it's the rules. And, um, quite often I hear, well, you know, it's those people upstairs at City Hall are full-time staff. So again, my reason for speaking is not about me, and, um, I'm grateful for that. And, um, so, uh, so, um, just to keep that in mind, a reminder, it's for the good of everybody and, um, not for a few, although of course, the rights of the individual have to be taken in. So, thank you, I'm finished.
Thank you.[1131.13][1131.13](applause) We have no guests this evening. Reports from the city officers. Chief Ingersoll.
Uh, no report.
Great, thank you. Corporation Council?
Nothing to report.
Deputy chief?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner?
Nothing to report.
Other commissioner?
Um, I don't have anything major to report, just that codes in the fire department are working together, um, the first quarter of this year to try to get some of our figured war problem. Apartment complex is under control. There's some living conditions that concern us, and we had a meeting today, I thought it was a good meeting, to take kind of joint action and direct action to make sure that all the places where people live are up to code.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Phillips, Commissioner Thomas, Deputy Chief Noonan, Corporation Council Giorgio, and Chief Ingersoll, thank you for your presence. It is appreciated and helpful. That closes off reports from the city officers. Miscellaneous communications. Do we have a cash report this evening?
Yes, the city of Utica cash report for December twenty twenty-two, total sixty-five point five million received and filed.
Thank you. I have a miscellaneous communication. Um, I believe two days from now will be ninety days from when the trial in Genesee Street started, uh, when it was striped. Um, so the, uh, the council will now have to deal with that at some point. Uh, I'd also like to, um, request that the council make a motion at some point throughout the meeting, a little bit later, to officially request from the floor, um, to, uh, receive the input from the social survey that was done, the survey meeting, um, so that, uh, everyone can review that. I think that would be prudent. Um, that's it. All right. Moving on. Petitions, remonstrances, and appeals. First district, council member Kedya Aylo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to pass tonight.
All right. Second district, council member Robert Burmaster.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing else to pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, third district, council member Celeste Friend. No, no. No. Councilperson Friend.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'm going to speak briefly about tomorrow night's planning board meeting. This, uh, is the next installment of the Stewart Shops proposal to build a gas station and convenience store at twenty-six thirty-two and twenty-six thirty-four Genesee Street on, at the side of the old raspberries, everybody knows. Um, so there is a, for everybody listening here and at home, there is a planning board tomorrow in this room at four-thirty. Uh, this is a, a proposal that went, started at the planning board, of course, and then went to scenic and historic. That took a long time because Stewart's, um, asked it to be tabled a couple times. And then it went to, to the ZBA, and now it is back before the planning board. Um, I think it's really important that we understand the value of the scenic and historic district as not just something that sort of we think is pretty and attractive and sort of has kind of aesthetic value, but that something that has really deep economic value for the long-term prospects of our city. And I think that we ought to work to preserve that, and I think that's why, in fact, there is a scenic and historic preservation district in the first place. The idea that, I mean, that's the very idea, but why the state, you know, decades ago passed the enabling legislation, which allowed us to, allowed us in other cities to create these districts and these commissions. And it is not the case that the particular house that they will tear down has sort of special historic district, uh, historic value. That's not, um, not the case, it doesn't, I don't think, but it is an original house to that district. And I think what's really important, and I think that part of what's missing here, and that I've tried to supply as sort of an, an important ingredient in all the things that have to be considered, is how much that stretch of Genesee from Hamden Place south to the New Hartford line, um, how different it will look, not just because a gas station gets added, but because a ga, a house gets torn down, a large house with shade trees and a hedge and a fence, gets torn down and a gas station is put on a corner with a second egress, with a second traffic exit. That when you look at the Stewart's plans, all of the angles that they include in their, in their architectural drawings, do not include that angle, the perspective of driving south on Genesee from Hamden Place towards New Hartford. That stretch of Genesee Street is going to look fundamentally different in a way that is going to under, undermine the character of that neighborhood. And as much as the planning board is charged with ensuring that our zoning ordinance is properly followed and that people, uh, you know, developers who follow the rules get to do what we, what they want to do, it's also the, the case that the planning board is charged with preserving the characters of our neighborhoods. And I think that this will fundamentally alter it. Um, I think it would be a very different case if Stewart's didn't want that corner property, but they do. Um, when I asked them, you know, what about if you took down the street that's, the house that's just to the south, which is currently a smoke shop, the old, where there was a tropical grotto, remember the tropical grotto there? Nope, they don't. That's not their business model. Um, they want the corner. The corner is very important to them. That's not surprising. Corner businesses, um, sort of offer a certain kind of passive advertising that is extremely valuable to retailers, um, which I, I understand, uh, I fully understand. Their, uh, business model is to maximize their profits, and that's how they would do so. So I do think it would be really, it would, it would not undermine the character of that neighborhood in the same way if that's what they wanted to do, but it isn't what they want to do. They want to tear down a house, tear down a couple of trees. It, it'll change the vantage point. It'll change what that neighborhood really looks like. So, um, of course, reasonable people can disagree, and I have plenty of constituents who would be happy to have the Stewart's there, but the vast majority of them don't want the Stewart's there, and those who don't want it, don't want it far more than those who are okay with it. So I'm representing them, and I'm representing what I can, is, is sort of my considered opinion about why a Stewart's in that location isn't right. And by the way, I think Stewart's is a great business. Had my lunch from Court Street Stewart's today. I go in there every two weeks, on the first and third Wednesday of every month, I stop in at the Court Street Stewart's, uh, and grab lunch. They're a great company, um, and they're an asset to our city. That store is an asset to the city. The store, um, it's not really in the city, but the store out on Whitesboro Street at the corner of Whitesboro and, and Campion, they're a great asset to that neighborhood, empty lot that they built on, and, and it's a terrific shop in that location. Um, it's just that Stewart's in the particular location where they want to build, it is not right for that specific neighborhood, and it is not right to disrupt the scenic and historic, um, preservation district. So, uh, that's my view. Um, I would urge everybody who wants to speak on this on either direction to come to tomorrow night's planning board, which is, um, a public hearing. So I would urge that everybody come tomorrow night, um, and participate one way or another in that decision. That's all I have tonight, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Fourth district, council member and majority leader Frank Mioli, you have the floor.
Mr. President, I'd like to pass tonight, you make time to my colleague.
Thank you. Fifth district, Venice Irvin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, today, um, Rebuild the Village, which is a center that's had, uh, headed up by, um, Freddie Hamilton. Um, today they had a ceremony, um, changing the name of the, um, the center to the Patrick Johnson Youth Center. And that was held at, um, one o'clock today. So, I think they had like thirty or forty people there that had witnessed that. And also tomorrow, for the first time, um, I think in NAACP history, in Utica, New York, and Onyatta County, the swearing-in ceremony for their officers and their standing committees and everything will be held here in the common council chambers. So that's a change that's instituted by, um, the new president. So if anybody would like, I think it's by, from what I read on, uh, I think it's by invitation only, so you can't come if you didn't get an invitation, but I just wanted to put it out there, that's the first time that, um, that's ever happened. I mean, they swore me in at the Utica Library, so I'm, I'm kind of hurt, so.[1688.13][1688.13](laughter) But anyway, thank you, Mr. President.
You're very welcome. Sixth district, Joe Beatrice, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just got a couple of things. Um, first, I'd like to thank our, our codes department. I've had, uh, numerous issues the last couple of weeks, and it was nice today to get a couple messages back that, um, the issues were taken care of, and, uh, I appreciate, um, not because he's sitting there, Marcus always answering your phone and helping me out. Uh, the next thing, quick, I know there's been a lot of crime in the area, and I'll tell you, we should, we should be very lucky that we have the police department, we do. But anybody that's out there listening now, please, things are a lot different than the world we live in today, is a lot different than the world we used to live in. Please lock your doors, lock your car doors, make it difficult if anybody's coming around, don't make it easy for anybody. Obviously, we don't want that to happen, and, um, it's just, uh, the world we live in today is not the world that I grew up in, and unfortunately, until some laws and stuff are changed, um, we're going to have a tough time. So just try to protect yourself, lock your doors, and, um, that's all I have tonight, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Council of Large, Minority Leader Mark Williams, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to pass.
Thank you, Council of Large. Samantha Classimo Testa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, January twenty-third is the ninety-day trial, as you brought up earlier, for Genesee Street, um, so I will be requesting, um, that there will be a, a, a meeting once we get the information from the trial, um, at whatever came from the survey. Unfortunately, the project is still not complete, so I think that that is a, is a hu- project is still not complete. So, I think that that is a, is a huge problem when totally assessing the situation. And that alone, I wouldn't be able to support a permanent stay with that. Also, the moratorium for smoke shops, convenience stores, gas stations, whatever you want to call it nowadays, also expires very soon. And I think it's important that, to note that we, that I tried to do something. Unfortunately, there was, you know, a lot of pushback from the administration. Therefore, once the smoke shop moratorium expires, it should be up to the administration to try and fix it. We still haven't heard anything from the SAFER grant for the Utica Fire Department, which I think is very, is very important, because we had talked about this last year, that, you know, during this time, that we would apply for it if nothing came out of it. We still had to talk about the staffing levels for the fire department, which are also out of contract as well. And I also thought it was kind of funny that we got an email from the city's Corporation Council, you know, explaining how the council gets a COLA and a pay increase, but yet we still have city employees that have worked through COVID and the pandemic that are still without a, a pay raise. So, I could say that I won't be taking it, increase in my pay, until all contracts are settled with the city, if possible. So, we know how, we know how that comes up. Also, Valley View is also a huge, a huge concern. It's a shame. Somebody called me the other day to, to book a bereavement, and I don't know of one place inside the city that could, that could host a bereavement like Valley View could. And it was a place that her mother, you know, had, had frequent quite often. And it was sad that because of what is going on in the state of affairs of the city government, especially with the SAFER grant and Valley View, that they weren't able to open up their doors for a family. So, that, that was pretty, pretty upsetting. We also haven't heard from Bowers Construction. I think that that, I would hopefully that that would be a-
We actually have. So, I'll comment on that.
So, yeah, I mean, if you, if you could, but they, they still haven't been in front of, in front of our chambers to, to give us a little background to their, to what's, what's been going on with them for the past thirteen years, which doesn't seem like much. I also want to comment on what Commissioner Phillips had stated earlier. I know that Lilly and Cooper Apartments have been a huge concern, not only for codes, but police and fire as well. So, I appreciate the city coming together and trying to find a solution. It's, it's really hard when you have absentee landlords that are from Ohio, that don't live in the area and don't have relatives that work for the city departments. They have to deal with their, their, their lack of improvements to, to their facilities. But that said, the budget's coming up. We just got our departmental requests. Considering that the city still has some ARPA funding left over, I shouldn't see a big increase to the, to the city budget. So, I think that we need to fill some gaps with that before we look at increasing taxes. I'll finalize with, we have a flood mitigation meeting, January twenty-fifth at four o'clock in the council chambers. We have the executive, executive, executive deputy director of Canals, Rebecca Hughes, coming in to give a presentation, which is actually really huge for this area, considering that, you know, somebody from the top, one of the top positions inside, inside the Canal Corp is coming to the council chambers to give us a presentation. I'm, I'm really thrilled about that. I think this flood mitigation task force has a lot of potential, and I hope that, you know, we keep pushing to, to get these type of people inside our, our rooms and, and for discussions along with the, you know, the county and the state. And lastly, we will be having a, a public safety meeting with the Utica Police Department. I also extended that invitation to the Utica Fire Department. I definitely think that there's some issues that, you know, we need to address, not only as a city, but as a council, in regards to the, the ongoing violence that is, that has happened in the city. And, and it's not only about the gun violence component, but it's also about, you know, ways that we could help the fire department and the police department, not only for budgetary concerns, but also legislative concerns. So, I think it's important that we get them in there. We can't, we can't let go of the issues at hand. So, I appreciate the council coming together and, you know, calling for a quorum to, in order to have those meetings, I think both the police and the fire department. Code's is more than welcome to come, and anybody else in between to discuss those matters. So, that's all I got tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council Large President Protemp Frank DeBrango, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know a couple of my colleagues that, you know, they talk about South Utica, and we're talking about the Stewart's. I, I know it's the council person's opinion, and everybody can give their opinion, and, but it's in the hands of the administration, it's in the hands of the planning board. So, whatever they decide to do tomorrow, I don't know if, if anybody could influence what they're going to do. It is progress. Stewart's followed all the rules and regulations. So, I don't know if there, this could be overturned. I am disappointed that they may be taking the corner lot on Woodlawn Avenue and Genesee Street, hopefully. The planning board will not allow that, but we will see tomorrow. As far as the flood mitigation meeting, I know it's scheduled one, and I will be attending that as well, as well as the public safety committee meeting. What, what I want to talk about with the public safety is, obviously, if there's ongoing investigations and there's things going on, they're not going to say anything publicly. But I feel that the administration is doing a, a, a pretty good job of trying to combat the gun violence. I mean, we added four, five officers to the force to be proactive. We took sixty-nine firearms arms off the street in two thousand twenty-three. We've added additional cameras throughout the city and high-crime areas. I think, you know, the council did support that. We gave the police department, you know, the most updated equipment that they could actually possibly, they could, they could possibly have. So, I believe we are doing the right thing as a council. If there's anything else we can do, I'm, I'm sure we will support it, because it's very, very important to have a safe city. But I, I want to say this, if, if they change these gun laws, you know, statewide and federal-wide, maybe, maybe we'll see a decrease in, in, you know, people carrying weapons illegally, illegally on the street. So, I look forward to the public safety meeting. Obviously, I look forward to talking with the fire department. I know some issues were brought up regarding, you know, some of the firehouses. I know they're working on it. The administration is trying to repair some of the firehouses as we speak. I don't know the completion, but I do plan on taking a walkthrough. I could say memory lane, because I was a firefighter, but I'll take, I'll take a look at it and see what the progress is. I think that's all I have for now, but I just, I just look forward to the meetings that are coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Just real quick, Bowers did get ahold of me this morning, apologized for not coming in in January, but they had, they did tell me that they have been putting together a presentation for each of the projects, and that they're going to be ready for a February meeting. And they're going to come in and do it. So, I'll firm that up with them. But I've been in contact with them so that they can do that for us, and they'll be here when they get here, I guess. All right? Thank you. All right, so legislation, got a full, full deck here. Let's get to it. We can't vote on everything as a block. As much as it would be nice. All right. Resolution number one, do we have a motion? We have Meola?
Second.
Second from Williamson. Commissioner Deeds for, Adita Rozick. What's that? Adita? Oh, I'm sorry. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Resolution number two.
Motion, Mr. President.
All right. Second from Williamson. Be resolved. So, Commissioner Deeds, Thalia Hunter, term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Your votes. All pieces have been read in pre-meeting conference.
Nineties adopted.
Resolution number three, Commissioner Deeds, for Sherri LaSalle.
Second.
Oh, man, who are we going with? I'm going to go with Beatrice. I'm going to go with Beatrice on that one. All right. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Resolution number four, Commissioner Deeds for Joe Fergel.
Aye.
All right. We got Mark Williamson and Frank Meola on that one. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Resolution number five, Commissioner Deeds for Tom Hallard. Meola, second from Beatrice. He already had him. What are you going to do? Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Okay, the next ordinance, ordinance number six, Board of Estim and Apportionment, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, moved by Meola. Second from Friend. This is a transfer from contingency to DPW Central Garage Gas and Oil, seventy thousand dollars. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Ordinance number seven, do we have a, yeah, Meola? Okay, we got Sam Testa, the second there. All right. He's not here anymore. This is an E and A transfer from Parks Maintenance Wages to Parks Maintenance Seasonal Employment, sum of fifty-five thousand dollars to increase seasonal contractual labor due to a lack of full-time employees. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Proposed ordinance number eight, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, E and A transfer. This is insurance recoveries to parks maintenance repairs, sum of thirty-four thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars and eighty-six cents. Your-
Motion, Mr. President.
Okay. Second from Williamson on that one. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Proposal ordinance nine, Meola. Colasmo Testa. Off-street parking wages to Parkway Rec Center repairs, sum of thirty thousand dollars. That was for railing and heating upgrades.
Nineties adopted.
Next ordinance does require unanimous approval if it does come to a vote.
Motion, Mr. President.
Second.
Okay. This is ordinance amending fees for use of ban shell. Now, be it ordained, the City of Utica Common Council does hereby rescind, repeal, and annul section two eighteen thirty-one E one of the City Utica Code of Ordinances. Be it further ordained, that chapter two eighteen, article two, division two of the Utica Code of Ordinances shall be amended by adding section two eighteen sixty-four entitled Fees for the Use of Ban Shell to Read as Follows. Further ordained, this is, this ordinance will take effect immediately.
Nineties adopted.
Thank you. The next ordinance is ordinance number eleven. It's a Trees and Shrub ordinance.
I'd like to refer this to committee, please, Mr. President.
Just so you're aware, Deputy Chief Noonan, this will stop us from being able to prune our trees.
Don't do it, fellas. I know the Crestway has a quorum at the moment, but still, don't do it.
Second to committee, Mr. President.
All right, it's in committee. Any opposed? All right, very cool. Another Commissioner Deeds, resolution number thirteen.
Number twelve, please.
Twelve? What happened to twelve?
It's at the back of number eleven, I betcha.
Oh, I accidentally stuck it in the, sorry about that. All right, there's a motion to place an ordinance rescinding section two seventeen twenty-seven of the Utica City Code of Ordinances into committee. DeBrango was the second. So, that is with the new Trees and Shrubs ordinance proposal. Ordinance number thirteen.
Motion to move, Mr. President.
Okay. Second from Friend. It's Commissioner Deeds for Jack Spade. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Proposal ordinance fourteen, sponsored by Councilmember Aiello. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Is the Meola, or Meola?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend, and retain number seventeen.
All right, so is this a motion to strike seventeen?
To retain, to retain seventeen, since it is, they're, it's proposing to be-
So, you want to strike it from the legislation?
From the legislation, yes.
Okay.
I'll second that amendment. I'll second that amendment, Mr. President.
All right.
Can I just ask where the term annul came from?
An annul?
Why isn't just rescind? Like, why isn't annul? Like, it's already available when you rescind it. So, can we just, like, take that word out, because it just adds an extra little bit of confusion? Just, like, be it ordained that section, subsection seventeen twenty, twenty-one of section two hundred and one six is two zero five, hereby be rescinded.
Is that a motion, Smith?
Yes.
Second.
Take the word annul out.
Before that happens, I'm going to, yeah, 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 just, just hang on a second. Can you please?
They shall, like, what is an annul?
Hold on, hold on. Your votes on striking seventeen from this legislation?
Yes.
Votes. Seventeen is coming out of this. That way, it's no longer going to be rescinded if we do this. Okay. That passed. Would you like to make your motion?
I'd like to make the motion just to, to hereby rescind it.
Okay, so you're going to-
I was saying, now, annul.
Perfect. Okay. Anyone, oh, Friend did second that. Your, just, your votes on the amendment, please. It's passed. All right, the amendment's passed. Is there any other discussion and/or amendments for this? Your vote.
Nineties adopted.
All right. Proposal ordinance number fifteen is sponsored by Councilmember Aiello. Is there a second? Meola's the second on that. No parking at all times. Be it ordained that section two sixteen, three sixty, schedule E, no parking at all times, be amended to include the following: Whitesboro Street from Auditorium Drive to Seneca Street, south side curb line; Whitesboro Street from Auditorium Drive to Seneca Street, north side curb line. Be further ordained that proper signage will be erected where necessary. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
That microphone's in the perfect place over there. It's just right in line. Ordinance number sixteen, sponsored by Councilmember Aiello, second from Meola. Be it ordained that section two sixteen, three sixty, schedule E, no parking at all times, be amended to include the following: Broadway from Whitesboro Street to Oriskney Street, both east and west side curb lines. Proper signage be erected where necessary. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
All right, the next piece, we need a motion for, it's resolution number seventeen, authorizing submission of a Restore New York project on Hotel Street. Meola's the motion. DeBrango had the second. I'm just going to re, I'm going to summarize this. Whereas grant funding has been made available through the state of New York administered by the Empire State Development Corporation, the funding program Restore New York Communities Initiative. Be it further resolved, the common council hereby authorizes the mayor to submit this Restore New York project to the state of New York and authorizes the mayor to enter into, enter into any and all necessary agreements upon successful award of the funding proposal. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Resolution number eighteen, Meola, second. All right, Williamson's the second on this one. This is authorizing the submission of a Restore New York project on Harbor Point. This is for the projects at Historic nineteen thirty-three building and the three fifteen debt through three nineteen Court Street building. Be it further resolved, the common council hereby authorizes the mayor to submit this Restore New York project to the state of New York and authorizes the mayor to enter into any and all necessary agreements upon successful award of the funding proposal. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Next group, legislation, U R E Properties. Councilmember Aiello sponsors resolution number nineteen. It's a call for a public hearing on the sale of four eighteen and four twenty Mandeville Streets to be held on Wednesday, February first, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M. It is the sale of those properties for a sum of thirteen thousand dollars to Diana Torres. Second from DeBrango. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
We have a motion to place ordinance twenty in committee.
Motion.
All right, Williamson's the second. Any opposed? Four eighteen and four twenty Mandeville Street is in committee. Resolution twenty-one, sponsored by Councilmember Irvin, second from Meola. This is the sale of one twenty-three Harding Place to Akka Paw for a sum of eighteen thousand dollars, again, February first, two thousand twenty-three. Your votes. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Orderance 22 is the sale.
Motion to commit, Mr. President.
All right. Second from Williamson. Any opposed? It's committed. Resolution 23, sponsored by Burmaster. Is there a second?
Second.
Colas Motesta's the second. This is the sale of 811 Chestnut Street, or I'm sorry, the public hearing on the sale of 811 Chestnut Street to be held again, February 1st, 2023, for a sum of $8,600. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Orderance 24 is-
Motion to commit.
Second.
All right, you guys can pick. That was Meola and Friend. Any opposed? In committee. Calling for a public hear, hearing on the sale of 923 Blaine Dynast Street. This is sponsored by Councilmember Meola. Do we have a second? Second from Aiello. 923 Blaine Dynast Street to Nazir Buco for a sum of $250. Again, the public hearing will be February 1st, 2023. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Proposed ordinance 26.
Motion to commit, please.
Second.
Second from Meola. Any opposed? Committed. Ordinance 20, resolution 27, sponsored by Councilmember Aiello. Public hearing of the sale of 1016, 1018, and a portion of 1022 Park Avenue. And 318 dot 58 dash 2 dash 75, that's not in the title. This is the public hearing to be held February 1st. Motion?
Second.
Or second, I mean. Colas Motesta, your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Proposed ordinance 28, is there a motion to commit?
Motion to commit, please, Mr. President.
Second.
Okay. Any opposed? It's been committed. All right. The next resolution is another Commissioner of Deeds. Do we have a motion? Motion for Meola, second from Aiello. Thank you. This is a Commissioner of Deeds for Jennifer Gorissee. Again, term ending December 31st, 2024. So, that's a yes vote? All right, we're good. Clear the board. Nine yeas. Proposed resolution number 30 is another Commissioner of Deeds. Motion for Meola, second from Burmaster. This is Michelle Navido Bumbalo. A term ending December 31st, 2024. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
We've read the cash report, right?
Yeah. Mr. President, I'd like to-
Dismiss, um, ordinance number 21 out of committee.
Second.
Okay. Any opposed to dispensing of that legislation?
Is it ordinance number three, the technical amendment?
Number three, right?
All right, so let's-
Number two.
Number three and number two.
Okay. So, motion has been reworded to dispense with two and three out of committee. There's two twos?
Yeah, there are two twos.
Hold on.
That's exactly what I'm getting at.
So, proposed ordinance three dated 11/21/2022, correct?
Yep.
And proposed ordinance two dated 1/4/2023.
Second, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I'm going to pull fire department legislation.
Oh, my gosh. Any opposed? Any opposed? Any opposed to dispensing of those? Okay, they've been dispensed. Any other motions from the floor?
Motion to close.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second to the adjournment?
Yes.
Two things.